Alright, hello and welcome to the Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting. I'll open up with pledge allegiance like we have already there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up this evening, we have municipal officers workshop business and public hearings. At this time, if you would like to speak about any of the items that come up, I'll read them off that are specifically here under the public hearing section. We'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name, and we'll try to limit to three minutes so everybody has a chance to speak. The first is Troyano Waste Services, Inc., and Phil Lightway, South Portland, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak about this license? Seeing none, move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Just one comment, in each one of these applications, there's a line that says amount of waste handled. Some are answered one way, some are answered another way, some aren't answered. So my question is, if that item isn't being used for anything, why is it on the application?
Well, it's a tough metric, I think, to establish as well, depending on your flows for each year, because these are for roll-off dumpsters, if I'm not mistaken. These are.
Yeah, right. Like, one, like, the one, one says two tons and the other one says, you know, fifteen hundred to two thousand tons a year. I mean, if, wondering what we're supposed to get out of that.
Yeah. Alright.
Just talk for the future.
Yeah, I know.
Second.
Alright, excellent. Follow the favor, four zero. Great. Next, we have Waste Management of Main, two thousand Morris Avenue, Portland, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak about this license? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Cellar Waste Services, DBA Pine Tree Waste, BBI Oceanside, Nineteen Clear Zone Road, Sanford, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak about this license? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Jeffrey A. Simpson, DBA Jeffrey A. Simpson, eight, two eighty-one Jagger Mill Road, Sanford, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak about this license? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Brian Marafa, DBA via your disposal, Twenty Pierce Avenue, Sanford, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak about this? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Nicholas Baker, DBA JCO disposal, nine sixty-one Lebanon Road, North Berwick, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak on this license? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Nathan Gay, DBA A one Environmental Service, Inc., one oh seven Predator Road, Wells, application for a solid waste disposal license. Would anybody like to speak on this license? Seeing none.
Close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second. All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have Terrence Abel-Lanson, DBA Ocean Taxi LLC, fifty Branch Road Wells, application for a taxi cab business license. Would anybody like to speak on this license? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
All those in favor, four zero. Moving on, we have good news. You can let us know some good news every year.
I just love to share the fact of the weekend. I thought the weekend went extremely well. Obviously, with the replacement at the cemetery, the Christmas parade, and certainly the tree lighting. I just love the amount of the attendance, all the dedication from so many people from the community, and I throw credit to my organization. So thank you.
Absolutely. Great event. It went very well.
Yeah, um, otherwise I pretty much.
Bring it on.
Yeah, the, I thought, again, like, Mike said, the whole weekend was very nice. Well done. Parades, the wreath laying was outstanding. Going back to the school, in a certain way, the school of recent across America was. You know, I think sometimes it's, it's like, hey, let's do this at the school. This will be great. What, what happens behind the scenes now becomes a whole other piece. Like, it, 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 kids aren't as easy as you think they are to move their schedule around or to do things. They're very happy to do it, but at the same time, the planning that goes into making a schedule change in the school or, or a piece, Josh Gould and Jim Daly, came together and figured out how to do this whole system. Then, and when you went by the elementary school, the entire elementary school was out. Eighty percent of the high schools out there. You can't get everybody out there because it was lunchtime. And I go ahead and try to take, get away from their lunch. You know, you know, you had things going on, but it, it all shifted around very well and, and it was, you know, not easy to pull off in any way. Everybody around it did a great job. Josh was, is unreal with his, his stuff and, 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 you know, just the fact that we were able to help with that and to pull it off. I just think everyone deserves so much credit that went into. It was a beautiful ceremony. I get to in and out of it because I was running up to high school to make sure that was, the kids were ready to go out there, but. I just thought the whole week really, as Mike said, the weekend, I, the, the week went so well and, and it was nice to do. And it was very, I think people around appreciated it and actually the vets appreciated it very much and that's what this is all about.
I'll follow up on that. I, I just want to thank the community for their support for the Festival of Trees. That was the first time that the Rotary Club has run that, with the aim being to, to fund the, the Rees Across America at Ocean View Cemetery. And the event went off very well. I'd like to thank the members of Rotary and the members of the Veterans Committee, usually that came out and volunteered and all. The, the, the community that's been supported at the full force as well. It was great, great events.
Yeah, I thought Scott and you guys, I'm gonna say it was, that was, I had fun. I, I went there. I didn't know anything about it. I didn't realize it like the best. Unfortunately, took all my tickets until I saw the fire truck tree. I knew what my grandson would like, threw everything in that fire truck tree. Didn't get it, but that's alright. But it was, it was a great event and a lot of fun.
It really came together and I mean, the, the donations, I mean, the, there were over fifty trees.
Yeah.
For all repairs.
Yeah, yeah. You're gonna have to have a bigger area, I think.
Oh, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'm sure you're.
And for the low food drink, I, I shouldn't forget to mention them. They were fantastic. And the whole just to host it there was, was amazing.
Bill and Wendy are good people.
They are.
I'll just give a thank you to the Rotary Club and to the Select Board. Like, all of the Rees Across America events that we've had over the past year. I think Saturdays was when it was poignant because it was so personal to our community. And because of you, we were able to cover each of those veteran gatherings. And it was tremendous seeing the community come out and support, seeing our big veterans committee. So enthused to be so involved. We got the singers out there. We got members of our staff and departments. It was just an amazing opportunity for our community to be involved in something like that. At our local cemetery and for it to be something that's now a tradition for us. So it was great weekend. It was really great to see that.
I just want to take a minute. I'll give a shout out to Corey Chase. As cold as it was Saturday morning, Corey volunteered his time as part of a project that Dave Johnson has been working on for us to get up the ham radio. So if we lose infrastructure, cell communication that they still, we, as a community, still have a means of communicating with one another. Corey volunteered his time to come out, proved a bunch of limbs off down at the town hall. So that was very good of him. Corey's a long time local guy, business owner. So I thought that was, that was very nice of him to offer up his bucket truck and his time to do that. And he stuck with it with the cold too, so. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
The last piece was, I, I didn't get to go to tree lighting. I apologize. Those that don't know me, Army Navy is a huge game for me. Thought about it and I can't miss that game. So I watched the Army Navy game, but I went down and looked. It's a beautiful, I, it's a great idea to have it there. I, I think. I like the one up here too, but I, I, it looked very nice. Great job on, on that. Heard the tree lighting was awesome. So I, I apologize. Hopefully next year it won't be on the Army Navy game. They, uh, what, what, that was another good event. So Tom's really coming along on these events and I, I think that's awesome.
It was so dark.
Alright. I shouldn't say it.
Alright, well, for the first time this evening, we're gonna have open to the public. We have ten minutes set aside. General questions, comments, concerns. We asked you to come up to the podium, state your name. We'll try to keep it to three minutes, just so everybody has a chance to speak. If this time will open it up, would anybody like to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you at the last meeting for bringing up the potholes down into the bridge. And it's very smooth and it looks great. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I was, I was commenting to town manager that that room now is nice. I mean, I'd rather have it two lanes, but it's nice. They did an exceptional job on the paving on that. That was very nice.
And it looks like more space to get through.
Yeah, it seemed like it got wider somehow. I don't know how that would happen, but it's nicer to drive through, that's for sure.
Yeah, that pothole is getting pretty bodacious.
After the rain, I, I forgot about it. Boy, did I hit it.
If I may, while we're just mentioning a couple of things, Jim, a couple of weeks ago, you brought up a couple of streetlights. Chris Faias informed me tonight that they will be replacing those with some lights that will make it much more.
I'm gonna say that they did look brighter the next day, my life. I think maybe the lights worked one minute and not another minute.
Yeah, I think the new ones will be much more.
I'm not that quick.
Maybe you went up there with a drone. Would anybody else from the public like to speak?
The lights on the fire station and all the buildings around here look great. It's really special.
Good. Thank you, John. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to current agenda items. First of which is review and action, accounts payable and payroll warrants. Did everybody have a chance to look through that? Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have motion. Move to approve and sign the warrant dated December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the amount of three million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
All those in favor, four zero. Next, we have update, discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. First is discussion and action on a zoning, zoning district boundary change proposal for Sea Glass Village. Mike, you wanna just open that up real quick?
Yes, thank you. This is a, a, a application that was submitted through the planning department. We have an ordinance that allows individual property owners or groups of property owners to request to either zoning that ordinance or text amendments. And we received one. And I believe the property is a sea glass property off Route one. And it's not representative to represent them. So present the application. And then we can go into some of the review aspects of it and the board's selection role. Typically, the board is likely to take a, a vote to receive the application. If you'd like to do that now, you can do that now before it goes under discussion.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So the crux of this issue seems like it was lot coverage in regards to driveways, patios and drip edge, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Definitely presented in the application, yes.
Alright.
I'll make a motion. We received the application.
Second. All those in favor, four zero.
And I got it. Turn it over to the applicant.
Perfect citation. Sounds good.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, folks. My name is Michael Swonik. I'm here with Archipelago Law on behalf of Sea Glass Village Communit- Communitarian Association. As Mike very graciously explained to you, we're here for a zoning change and the ordinance is to allow that. We're gonna tell the board to fix this. Specifically, we're here today as a first step in the initiating a zoning change to either change the current rural zoning to the RA zoning, which is residential A zoning in the area for this specific lot. That zone is just south one lot, so we're asking you to extend it into just one lot north to uncover this plot as well. Or as an alternative, create a new residential zone district with an increase, increased lot coverage levels. As you know, the town has a three-step process to adopting a zoning amendment. We begin here with the Select Board. What we're asking you to do today is determine, to determine that the materials submitted meet the ordinance requirements and, just make sure that they generally meet those ordinance requirements and the six criteria. After that, it will go to the Planning Board, and that's really where the public hearing takes place and more of the discussion on the merits is our understanding. And then the Planning Board will make a recommendation back to you folks whether you should, whether they believe that you should approve the zoning method or not. Tonight, I'm requesting that this board agree with the planning, planning department's memo that this application is in general conformance with the ordinance itself. I'm also asking that you forward the application over to the Planning Board for further review on the merits and real discussion regarding the comprehensive plan and the ordinance itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have going forward about the application.
The question that I asked, would you say that's, that's really the, the concern that's driving this?
The crux of the issue with the development is when it was passed that there is a twenty percent lot coverage allowance. That's an issue for the infrastructure that's there now. It doesn't allow drip edges on homes, so structural elements of the actual buildings that are there now will deteriorate quicker if you can't control stormwater coming off a roof. Also, there is, doesn't allow for driveways as lot coverage. Instead, vehicles are parking on grass. That is in effect, that's not how we want it developed. So yes, we are looking for an elevated lot coverage requirement, really only by five percent. The RA district below allows a forty percent coverage though. So it'll allow substantial more lot coverage. Any, I will say though, that anything that is proposed by the development, they couldn't just go pull a permit with the codes office or anything. You would have to go back before the Planning Board. For the review at site plan amendment. And through that process, they would also review stormwater, things like that. So anything that was designed will have to go through a town review process.
So what I was curious about, Mike, this might, I'd be interested in your thoughts. For the rezoning, isn't there a way that we could just go through and just, says, I mean, the crush stone thing, crush stones, it's permeable. It breaks the flow of water up. It's not like a paved surface. Isn't there something that we could do to go through to quantify those things rather than changing the entire zoning area?
Well, for the, for the drip edge issue, there are some other solutions they could do. I think in the application, they had a photograph of lattice work that was rotting. You could use a different material, like a PVC lattice material that wouldn't rot. You could do some stone drip edges that are set in alignment with the roofies. And that would increase the footprint of the building, would increase, increase the lot coverage. So for that aspect, there are a couple of other solutions other than increasing lot coverage. For the driveway surface areas, about, I think it was about half and half on that project, where it would be grass parking and the other half was gravel or pavement. For lot coverage purposes, it's either vegetated or not vegetated. So it's, it's not drainage related. It's vegetation or not vegetation. So taking those grass parking spaces and changing them to stone, that would be lot coverage.
What, what year did we change that?
That was, we defined the lot coverage, I believe, in nineteen ninety-three or ninety-four.
Around, but, at, round about, let's say, between two thousand ten and two thousand, I want to say maybe fifteen or sixteen. There was specifically an ordinance change surrounding how crushed stone was calculated. I remember because there was a big uproar about some of these places having to pull their driveways out with grass on.
The only change was in twenty thirteen for actually discontinuing the use of a seasonal potage, but the definition of lot coverage has not changed since nineteen ninety-four.
I thought, and I, but I swore I could remember you guys had a meeting where crushed stone specifically came into question.
Okay, it might have come into question, but nothing was changed in works wise.
I seem to remember when that was constructed, there was grid system that was used for the parking to solidify the, the soil, so it wouldn't deteriorate and permit parking on, on the grass. Is that not still in place?
Yes, they built all the grass parking with a plastic grid. So you, you have base gravel underneath the parking space to support the load of a vehicle. And then you have a plastic grid that's pinned in place. And then you put topsoil with a plastic grid to hold that topsoil in place and allow the grass to grow. Some other facilities have used concrete open cells. And they have a concrete block basically that uses a paper unit. They fill the cells with topsoil and the grass grows. At this facility, they chose the plastic grid roof, which isn't quite as successful as the concrete. There's a few other cottage facilities that have used the concrete with grass and, and maintain that vegetated state very well.
So if this property was constructed without those and they had chosen to pave, my assumption is that they wouldn't have been able to build quite as many of the, the units on the property.
Correct. The whole, the whole development was designed at nineteen point eight-six percent lot coverage, which is right at the max, pretty much. If the developer had chosen to do less of common facilities or less cottages, that number would have been less and everyone could have had gravel paved parking. But that was a choice the original developer made and the plans were designed on that. All the permitting was designed on that. So there could have been avenues to have gravel parking everywhere, but it would have probably been less units or lesser common facilities that they have there.
So does the state define the crushed stone as the, the, playing into lot coverage or is that all for?
That was, might be what changed in that time period. DEP changed their definition of lot coverage. That was a change that happened within that specific time period you were describing.
The reason why I ask, because I remember going through it. Obviously, if I trade, installing crushed stone would be more calling it head and fold out. In some towns, at that time, I know that Wells came out and said, okay, crushed stone is gonna count against lot coverage. Other towns, no, it doesn't count against lot coverage. So that's why I was curious.
Oh, it's, it's different in every town. Absolutely. Different.
When you use the term drip edge, you're not referring to drip edge on the edge of a roof. You're, you're referring to where the water hits the ground?
Yes, I mean, anything on the floor, if Mike explained, taking that outside the parameters of the roof will be additional lot coverage, even if it's slightly outside the boundary of what the roof is. So.
Probably crushed stone going around your, your perimeter of your house.
If it extends at all past the roof line, then that's additional impervious surface.
Okay, so you, you're not talking about installing drip edge on the edge of the roof and that causing a problem, right?
No, we're, everything that we're saying.
Yeah, because I couldn't understand how it happened to just make, make a difference. So you, you're referring to the place where the water that comes off the drip edge on the roof, it's the ground.
Yes, regardless, it wouldn't matter if you expand the roof line, oh, even with that slight amount, or if you do it on the ground, it's still additional lot coverage with a lot.
So.
Crushed stones counting when you're building footprint.
Okay.
What, what it boils down to.
Then, if I, if I'd be able to correct you more, with DEP does consider crushed stone as impervious surfaces as well, even though we consider it impervious because water does seep through.
I think we need to be aware of the fact that if we go forward with this, there's gonna be a line forming behind them of all the other seasonal cottages that were built at all at the same time. Mike, could you take us through the, the different criteria that we need to look at as to whether or not this application is complete?
Yes, we, they have submitted materials, all the materials that are required. They did in, in their cover letter, they described how they believe they meet the six criteria for zoning change. They provided plans showing the lot and changing it from rural to RA. So they have a complete application. So one, one aspect of review and application is just for the board of selectmen to determine that they have submitted all the materials necessary to make the application complete. Through the process of reviewing it, you can ask for other information. The Planning Board can ask for other information, but they have supplied a complete application. So it would be fair to take a vote and say that the application submittal was complete. Compliance is another issue which we can look at either the cover letter that they submitted that talked about the six criteria or my memo. I had made some notes on the six criteria as well. There were a couple of criteria that I had concerns over. And one was in the existing two thousand and five ConC Plan. It does describe this area as a transitional area. It's called T one zone, the moody area. And it is envisioned as a growth area. Because it has sewer water available, which this property is fully served by municipal services in that regard. But it, it had a caveat that if the zoning was changed in that area to encourage growth, that lot coverage would remain the same, except allowed to increase five percent for pedestrian usage. So sidewalks, trails, that type of thing. And I ConC Plan is just a general guide to its zoning. But that was a very specific call in the two thousand and five plan that doesn't really comply with the, with the applications being made. They're proposing it for drip edges, parking areas, maybe some, you know, patios beside the units. And that doesn't fit with the exact, you know, language within the current ConC Plan. But it is a designated growth area by the ConC.
It's a designated growth area, but it's, it currently fully utilized, correct?
Yes, they so, what does that, what does that?
Well, it's not residential. It's, it's commercial. It's just logic. These are dwellings.
Yeah, these are dwellings, right?
No, so this is a seasonal cottage. They have to close down. It's a six months a year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the ConC Plan does.
It's not a book.
Yeah, and the ConC Plan does target the areas of residential growth areas versus a commercial growth area. And the town did decide in twenty thirteen to eliminate that as a use, allowed use in the rural zone. So the direction the town took at that point was certainly nothing could be expanded on the site or additional units. That could not be.
Well, it, it's, it seems to me that this is the reverse of that. They built the additional units already and now we're looking for additional density for the impervious surface. We are to use those credits.
I could respond if, if, if you had an opportunity. First, I, I do believe, and I think I'm wrong, I may be, that this initial review was just like we talked about completeness and period out an initial take on the, on the, what the application is. The merits are more discussed at the Planning Board stage, so we have an opportunity to really address any of those concerns for those six criteria. And then the Select Board, even if it takes what the Planning Board, whether they recommend approval or not, and then you folk consider it at a later date as well. My understanding is that this is more of a completeness review at this point. I'm happy to address that. And especially that one comment about conformance with the comprehensive plan, because that really is everything when it comes to zoning changes. What Mike says is completely accurate. The comprehensive plan is a guide for the town over a certain amount of years until they adopt. over a certain amount of years until they adopt into one of where the vision for it to go. The law court has specifically said that, uh, any zoning change has to be in harmony with the comprehensive plan, but it does not have to follow specifically each factor of the comprehensive plan. As we know, and some folks who might be on the comprehensive plan committee, there's a lot of conflicting information in comprehensive plans for certain areas. Um, so it would be extremely difficult for any zoning change to ever meet every aspect of the comprehensive plan. Here, there is that requirement that Mike pointed out with the only additional five percent. However, that's really one of the only things we can find that goes against this change. There are a lot of things that also support the change. Um, and I can go through some of those things if you, if you wanted me to, um. We, we pointed out just the high dense, the high density area that this is. Even one more parcel to the north has those relatively high density development on that as well, a subdivision. Uh, this is sandwiched between, a rural area sandwiched between two relatively high density residential areas, so the density itself isn't changing, it's actually supported by this change. Uh, additionally, the, uh, the plan identifies rural areas. The comprehensive plan that is, and actually defines them, uh. Give you one moment, um. It says that it's not physically suitable for accommodating high density or commercial res- or commercial uses. This is clearly an area that is suitable for that. The planning board has passed that plan, uh, way back when, I think it was two thousand seven, if I'm not mistaken. And subsequently, there's been amendments to that plan. So, I mean, the town has recognized that this is an area that's not specifically rural, as the comprehensive plan will situate for rural areas. Additionally, this is a transitional area, um, Seaglass Village, it's within the definition of a transitional area. And lastly, uh, the town supports tourism, it's one of the major economic drivers of community. This use clearly, it enhances Seaglass itself and allows parking on the lots itself in front of the units. I understand that that's there now. One of the major problems with that is to not be lot coverage area, you have to maintain that grass. You can only imagine how difficult it is to maintain the grass when you're driving on and expecting to park on it. That's really what the change is. They're not trying to change the character of the development, but they are trying to support, um, the continued economic development and the tourism in the area, the seasonal tourism. So for all of those reasons, which we think that outweighs the five percent increase that goes against this change.
But you can only imagine that, that was approved and you got your lot coverage that you wanted back in nineteen whatever, ninety-three, and now you wanna change the rules. To, to make it better for you, but we might not be that interested in changing the rules. But, you know, I, I'm sorry, but that, that's the way I feel about this. It's like, well, you got, not you personally, I don't mean beating Seaglass. You got what they wanted in nineteen ninety-three, a lot of people didn't like what they got, but they got it. And now you come back to it, someone expand. I, I'm not sure that that's, and you, and, you know, we, we voted to pass it on, but I, I'm not really for the for, to be, I. Not changing the rules midway.
No, I can understand that, uh, clearly I wasn't here in two thousand three when this was passed. Uh, however, there's, there's been a lot of things in the town that's changed since then. The ordinances itself have changed since then, two thousand thirteen. As recent as then, they've changed drastically, they're not getting allowed to use anymore. So, uh, the town has implemented a process to allow us to come back here and ask for a change. And like the town changing, the development's changing, and the people who own within the development. Um, the town allows this process, and that's why we're here, uh, just following the process and asking for that.
If my memory is correct, I believe that this was constructed in this way to guarantee that it would never become a year-round facility. As you can't park on grass during month season or during the winter months, this was a guarantee, and if this gets changed. We could be very well back at this, at this table again in a couple of years, talking about that eventuality.
It will be the next step.
It will.
Can I comment?
I'm, I'm on the board of Seaglass, can I ask you a question?
Good, so you'd be a part of the applicant if you wanna come up to the podium, yeah, I think that's just fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna introduce myself, um. Larry Atto, I'm the board director of Seaglass. I was actually the arrow, the builder developers handed it over to. Uh, so just a couple of clarifications. The parking areas, we're talking, we're talking about twelve or fifteen parking areas that were, were stolen. I know before we got our stupid occupancy, the stone was removed with these grid patterns. Uh, to get over twenty percent. And I'll echo, I'm also a civil engineer and strong on the image, I'll echo the, the challenge of those parking areas is really tough. So we're really talking about maintenance. And Mike, there's probably a question for you. You mentioned that we could use the concrete blocks uh, as an alternate to the grids, which don't work, cause you park in a compact soil and it just, you can't grow grass. So you know, imagine a hot muffler, you know, in a car that's been driving up here. It's a dangerous situation. The drip edge is the same thing. Now, we're quite a few years into the development, and really what the board wants is to maintain the facility. Right? Uh, the drip edge is a problem, it starts to rot those cottages, so uh, we're not here to come, try to change anything that how we're trying to do the development. But that's to keep good maintenance on the property, right? Uh, which is a benefit to the town, right? Also benefit to the owners. But I'd like to know, uh, as a board member, if, uh, concrete pavers is an option, just because that's always been rejected. Howard, and what you're talking about, I think it was Chair Pershing, I'm sorry, I don't hear you, Amber.
John.
Excuse me?
John.
John, excuse me, John, John. So the, uh, the headaches with removing now, just where did you learn all the arguments? Cause it was a big uproar at Seaglass that we had sown in. Uh, Howard actually removed several cottages, you remember, they gave up under the twenty percent. Uh, in fact, there was probably thirteen to fifteen cottages removed from Seaglass, uh, to give more space. Uh, and give more green space. So we're, we're right up against that, pointing really all of looking for is to to ask actually, to, to maintain the facility.
But you had to remove it because it was a violation.
Uh. Yeah, I, I can't argue that.
Yeah, that's, so you had to remove it because you buy that.
We were, we, you know, as they did the walk through prior to the stupid occupancy, I think it was. My memory serves me, that's probably the situation. But, so I just wanna give you the owner's perspective about, you know, so not, not a power grab. We're not trying to change the site, and the essence of the site, it's really just now that the site is aging and we have to have a reserve on it, it's really to preserve the maintenance. So, and particularly the cottages, which are perfect. So I think it's for your time.
Thank you, sir. So Mike, it was the state that changed the definition of impervious surface, what, that was about, that within that timeframe? Because something changed, because it wasn't just Seaglass that had to remove, it was metal ledge, it was, uh, Seaview Campgrounds, it was you know, it was a lot of those places and a lot of places that had been in for a long time. Granted, I understand that maybe somewhere, maybe some of those were over what they should have been according to the original site plan, but it was literally every place that had to take out every driveway.
Can I ask a question? I don't believe Seaglass had to remove it because of what the DEP said.
Well, that's what I'm curious about.
We said, they want, we wanted that grass.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for some history.
Just what Scott said, he said, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, I thought that's why, because we had said at that time, you're building these two, I wasn't there, that, you know, I mean, but I remember reading about the, the three season cottages. We did not ever want them to become anything more than three season cottages. And so that grass structure would say, it's gonna get muddy and then it's tough to fly, you could never do that if you wanna come back. I don't believe this, the state DEP told them they had to remove that, I believe we said that.
Correct, it was not DEP related at all.
Right.
Well, what was, okay, let's use in this, I'm not getting off topic, but just with the comparison, like I said, I'm trying to make sense of this, like metal edge and I, I specifically remember watching a town meeting where it was, it was stated that some unit owners were covering their entire lot in crushed stone and it was becoming an issue. And I was just looking for the history and context on that and what that change was.
On that, on that particular one, yeah, there was a, it was an old site plan approved in eighty-nine and then nineteen ninety. Um, and, and some of that lot coverage, lot coverage was minimized at that point, but there was no definition. The definition didn't come until ninety-four. Um, so that with metal legend that have been, being a consent agreement, because we, we had a gap in period of time where lot coverage was not defined. But on that particular site plan, we did have a defined site layout, which had about a thousand square foot of gravel or impervious allowed for each RV site. And so they still had to comply with the site plan requirements for that. Um, so it wasn't, it was partly lot coverage related. Uh, but that was a consent agreement that the town did with that particular development because of its age when it was approved. Uh, Seaview West, that one, uh, it was built with stone parking, uh, but it was always approved to be grass. And it wasn't until we came in for a site plan amendment that when we did our site walk with the planning board, that we recognized that this parking is in grass. Um, so that's why they had to convert theirs to grass. But it was always part of the cycle of approval, it just wasn't built that way. Seaglass, um, the last change that occurred there was the last amendment, I believe it was in twenty sixteen, around that time period. And the footprints that were originally approved of the cottages were generic footprint, the same footprint for every cottage. And they built three different designs, I believe, out there. And that each design had a bigger footprint than what was assumed when the engineer did the original layout. And so that bigger footprint increased the overall lot coverage, and that's why they've lost some of the units at the end. And they're compensating for that, they lost some units, they reduced one of the tennis court sizes, I believe, to, um, maybe, yeah. But that was all part of the last cycling approval by the planning board.
Great, well, thank you for the, the history, Mike, because I was just trying to, like I said, just, just as I'm sitting here thinking about this, because like I said, in my profession, I've run into in different municipalities where I've called code and they specifically told me that crushed stone didn't count against lot coverage. So that's, that's what, it's just, to me, it's you know, we're asking for some crushed stone and just trying to reconcile all of this. So thank you again, Mike. So basically, and, and just as a reminder, all we're doing tonight is voting on whether they've submitted a complete application, and then that goes into the review process, similar to what we've, um, did, uh, the last, since this came up.
You know, if there was one of the criteria, which the board's likely just says, you know, there's no way it meets this. Like, if, if you made the decision that it does not comply with the con plan, the con plan is a hard line, twenty percent, if, even if the zoning changed, coverage cannot change. If there was a, a showstopper like that, you, you could vote that it cannot meet the criteria, and then the application would end here tonight. Um, but typically, you haven't done that. On other zoning applications, you've wanted to give a planning board opinion. Planning board conducts a public hearing, you get some public, you know, opinion as well. But if there's a couple of criteria that you as a board determine just cannot be met. You know, it's, it's not, uh, it doesn't meet one of the six criteria, then, then you could vote to deny the application tonight.
Would you mind?
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna go saying I'm recommending that, I'm just saying what the process is and if the board felt that way.
I, I, I wouldn't wanna go in that route, um, you know, I, I think I want to allow the planning committee to take a, a look at it and make that determination, which four of us. Not because, you know, it's just presented to us. And we can't make that determination in fifteen minutes.
And I would add, uh, now that we hear some of your concerns, it gives, gives us an opportunity to address them before the planning board and, uh, really have a, a well thought out, a small time to get this up.
Mike, would you mind walking us through those six criteria?
Absolutely. So I, in the memo I prepared, I, I laid out, uh, the process and on the second page, the third page of it, I have comments regarding, uh, section one forty-five dash six, paragraphs D one through D six. Um, and I, I quote what the standard is and, and some of my thoughts on it. Um. Go back. These standards. So the first standard is the proposed amendment, a lot materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the subject property or properties in the vicinity. Um, and I think in that regard, you know, if, if lot coverage, an increase in lot coverage was approved, then they would have to go through the site plan approval process, they'd have to amend the DEP permit as well. And through that process, it would have to be proven that it would not be impacting abiding lots with stormwater or overburdening the infrastructure. So that would be part of the site plan approval process and DEP process. Um, so those are thought that that standard could be met. Uh, the second item is the proposed amendment is warranted because of a change of circumstances or because of a need for additional property in the proposed zoning district. Um, that one's a little more difficult because the properties aren't even fully developed. And, you know, that, I think that section is more intended in a vacant parcel or parcel that could be redeveloped commercially. And there was a commercial demand for new use. You know, that, that item would be more in that regard. So this property doesn't quite fit the mold for that criteria, cause it is already fully developed. Um, but you could look at it in the aspect of what the applicant is proposing, is just to maintain their existing facility requirements, you know, would be, would be good to have. Um, the next item is the subject property is suitable for development in general conformance with zoning standards under the proposed zoning district. Uh, so that would be, if it was changed to the RA zone, the RA zone is really geared towards residential development. This is again already developed as a commercial establishment. Um, the seasonal cottage use is not an allowed zone in the RA district or the rural district anymore. So that, there's no difference there, it's an existing non-conforming use. Um, the other part of the zoning change that was being proposed potentially was not to just change this property to an RA zone, but to change it to a new zone altogether with a rename, which would allow a seasonal cottage use back again, so it wouldn't make an un-conforming aspect and, and be specific to coverage. Um, so that could be met if, if that avenue was taken. Um, the next item is the property shall have the ability to be served by adequate facilities, including roads, sewer, water, fire, protection, uh, sewer disposal, stormwater drainage. Um, it's a fully developed site, so all that infrastructure is already in place, so they, they can meet that standard. Uh, the next item is the proposed amendment is in accord with the Wells Comprehensive Plan. And that's where I was really struggling as far as, like, the two thousand and five plan is very specific on even if you converted it to a residential growth area, because it has the infrastructure to have that, that lot coverage should stay at twenty percent, except increased five percent for pedestrian uses. Um, but I don't know how that one can be met, unless you take a broader interpretation of the con plan and use it as a guide, and that one of the other criteria will sort of override that. Um, the last criteria is the proposed amendment complied with all other applicable regulations in the for the town, the state and federal statutes. And if, if there was an allowance of additional lot coverage, like I said, they'd have to go through the site plan approval process, I'm in their DEP site location permit, and that would guarantee that it meets those criteria. Thank you.
On podcast on this. Well, John, at this point, I, I'd like to move that we acknowledge receipt of the application and report it forward to the planning committee.
You have a second?
One second.
All in favor? All opposed? Three one. So we'll move that forward to planning board? Uh, state wasn't a public hearing, but you did have a question, if you wanted to ask my method, you see. Oh, sure.
Section of Seaglass was developed into, I believe in eleven hundred and twelve months, down below, right near the one. Is that part of that twenty percent, or is that a complete separate entity from the rest of the twenty percent? How does that fit into it? Cause that's a change that's made a few years ago, I believe.
Yes, the hotel units are, can actually be architected, get around.
Right.
Uh, they have to follow.
Get out per, per month or three days or something.
Well, there's limitation on how long they can be architected by a specific plot event. Uh, but that's all the front part of the property, it's all one property, so it's all one approval of one project, uh, but that's a G B zone.
So that doesn't have anything to do with this twenty percent you're trying to discuss?
No, and the G B zone are allowed to go to sixty-five percent lot coverage.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks. John McCollough, I neglected to, I was like, I'm rushing to, uh, to put the general assistance board. Uh, I moved, I moved, decided to warrant dated December seventeen to twenty twenty-four, the amount of three billion, that's seven hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Uh, I moved, I moved the signed warrant dated December seventeen to twenty twenty-four, the amount of three billion, that's seven hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents. And the general assistance work is December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, the amount of three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
All in favor? Or zero?
So that's, uh, many of the original marks?
It is.
Can I ask you one question on the last one? If something, if something is, uh. It's, if it's a non-conforming use, how can it apply with all applicable regulations of the town?
As long as it doesn't expand, because we do have a non-conforming structure, non-conforming use section of the ordinance. And that would be what would control, even if lot coverage was increased for that zone, they can't expand the units. Because they're existing non-conforming, maintenance can be done on them, certain modernizations can be done on them. But they would not be allowed to be expanded as a non-conforming structure and non-conformal use.
All right, thanks for the explanation, Mike. Excellent. Um, all right, next we have, uh, discussion and action to accept the conservation easement and drainage easement for Chick, uh, Chick's Crossing Village subdivision.
Thank you, yes, no, no, I have a big screen that I could point to with maps, but we're not in the location, that's a big screen. Uh, this is, uh, regarding a proof subdivision that's currently under construction on Chick Crossing Road. The subdivision was a twenty lot cluster subdivision with, uh, twenty-four point five three acres of open space. That is to be restricted by a conservation easement to be conveyed to both the town and the water district. Uh, because it was adjacent to Branch Brook, in the Branch Brook Lockworkburg, there were restrictions in the subdivision that limited. Uh, what could be done to fertilizers, pesticides on the properties there. The property in the open space itself is very restricted, and what can occur there, you could just have walking trails that don't get approved. Uh, in, improved in a, in a manner like gravel base, you couldn't do that, they could establish walking trails there. Um, but part of the approval was that this conservation easement would be placed. Uh, over the, a portion of the open space and be conveyed to the town and the water district. Uh, the other easement for the, the board selectmen to consider accepting is a drainage easement. Uh, part of the subdivision, France, France Crossing Road, there was an existing town culvert that crossed that road. And the drainage from that culvert crossed one of the lots of the subdivision. And one of the subdivision ordinance requires developer to buy the drainage easement to benefit the town. So that the town can almost guarantee that we can maintain that culvert and the flow from it. Uh, so there were two easements to be conveyed, uh, to the town from the developer. Uh, the draft documents were provided as part of the planning board review and approval process. They were reviewed by the town attorney, myself, and those documents have been updated just by dates, uh, basically. For, uh, today, because it was a couple of years ago that it got approved. Um, but that's background on the two easements, and a request would be that the board of selectmen accept those two easements, so the developer can sign and approve.
Sorry, was this a discussion?
Out of curiosity, have, have these, uh, waters tested, completed on the subdivision?
Two lots have submitted building permits and installed wells in the water testing, I believe, has occurred. Yes. But only two of the lots are, are ready for a building permit and a basement itself.
Any other discussion?
You mentioned, um, pesticides and fertilizer, you know, I understand, in, in the lot will be.
There's, um, on the subdivision itself, the subdivision lots are, are pretty far distance wise from the Branch Brook. Uh, but the lawns for the homes in the subdivision are restricted from using chemical fertilizers and pesticides. Uh, so if there was runoff from those lots that would get into an adjacent drainage ditch and eventually make it the Branch Brook. The water district would, would discover that in the water testing, because they do pretty significant water testing in the Branch Brook, it's the water source for the water district. Um, so if they saw any indications that something was getting into the water stream. They'd do further testing across the open space, and then the HOA, the homeowners association of the developer would have to be corrupted and. And, uh, corrected as far as, so usually you feel there's, uh, adequate controls. It's a combination between the town and the water district, so I think that's a nice combination, if, if someone complains. To the town about it, even a resident that sees someone fertilizing their lawn improperly, uh, they can call the town, we can act on it. If the water district has sampling that shows issues, they can act on it, uh, so it provides good protection to the range book.
So, um, on the second page, uh. One of them goes with, uh, lots coming construction?
Uh, they've been cleared, there was a buffer requirement out by the road that's been maintained. Uh, the back side of them has some storm water features for storm water treatment for runoff. Uh, so they've been cleared for that storm water trench in the pond, uh, but no, no building permits since. Yes, uh, this is an excerpt, rightfully approved subdivision plan, um, and I highlighted it easement because it was colorful, so it was hard to see. What else am I highlighting?
So is it, when. Subdivisions are approved, is it common? To create lots on land that are going to be used for. Eventually for easements? Or, or water response, is that?
Ideally, it's nice to see it in the open space, um, but a lot of times the water can leak low in one location. So the only way to accommodate that is the easement across the lot.
They have to. Or not, or not make the building one.
And they have to prove this little building envelope above and beyond that, absolutely, they have to keep the setback out of it, the building footprint for the house has to be out of it. The well has to be in a good location as well. And what, one of the restrictions was the developer, you know, cannot get a building permit or convey a lot until these easements are accepted by the town.
You know, based on the previous discussion that we had, it seems like it's one of those situations is get as many licenses as you can. And, and do what you have to do later to make it work.
Oh, developers always want to maximize the lots.
I, I understand it. I understand. And don't necessarily like it.
Was that indicated on there? I mean, was that location for the drainage indicated on their original site plan submitted to the town though?
Yeah, yeah, part of the, you know, actually it was identified as a drainage wave when we did our original site walk, right at the beginning of that subdivision process. And knowing there was a town culvert there that sent flow which across that lot. Uh, that's, there is a specific part of the ordinance that covers that and says that, uh, that drainage easement has to be created to accommodate town drainage. So if that lot, if that lot got developed and that lot owner somehow locked that area from drainage flow, the town has the right to go in and correct that. That is the whole purpose of these.
Well, let me ask a personal question. What would happen if we just said no?
Well, that's a good question, um. On, on which part, in concert, there are two parts of the conservation easement, and then there's the drainage.
Explain each one again.
So, the conservation is, that, that gives the town the ability to. Uh, investigate the open space, make sure there's nothing overused. Uh, I mean, that is part of the subdivision approval process also, that they can't develop the open space. But by getting a conservation easement process, it binds up even more deeply. Um, so the conservation easement is protection for the branch broad. The drainage easement is to accommodate town drainage from Chick Crossing Road across their property.
So that's not drainage, it's going from their part, property. Towards Branch Brook and Seattle, Russia.
Yes, it's our drainage going across there, just, um, so if the board selectmen didn't want to accept that. Then they would have to revise their subdivision plan to eliminate it, and we just, we lose the opportunity to maintain that drainage with the future.
I guess I'll, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept conservation easement and drainage easement for Chick's Crossing Village subdivision. You have a second? All in favor? Or zero? Thank you, Mike. Next, we have discussion and action on proposal for an air quality monitoring station at Wells Harbor.
Mike, it's Mike's night.
Is it? Oh, wow, good deal.
I can kick this one off as well, I didn't do, can we have some? Yeah, I'll be right next to you. Uh, so this is, I, again, I don't have my big monitor, but.
Well, pretending like.
Oh, yeah, I, I make.
Oh, look at those. Thank you. Yeah, we got all the advantages.
And Mike, Mike and I received a request earlier this year, from D E G, um, requesting somewhere at Harbor. Park area to put in here a monitoring station, their current station is up in kind of one port. And received, I mean, some close calls with the storms last year. Uh, it was envisioned that a safer location was needed inland, but still, you know. Can think, get quality air sampling, not disturbed by other effects in the atmosphere, um, generally. I recommend the town to consider a location on the harbor park, um. We've had a few correspondence and came up with alternate locations, but it seemed like this one location that's in your packet. Met all of their criteria, uh, it's located. On town property, but within the sanitary district easement, their pump station at the harbor. Um, so the area where the town currently has a shed, uh, and from the photographs you can see us, it's a shed-like structure. Um, so we located right beside our existing shed. It's on town property, but in the sanitary, I did contact the sanitary district. And superintendent said that they'd be okay with that structure there, as long as it wasn't on a foundation. As long as, uh, they didn't access it through their access road to the pump station. Um, so they'd be okay with it there as well. Uh, they would need to hook up electrical utilities, but in the basic pole, the service. Um, and we'd have to work on either license agreement with the state or memorandum of understanding of allowing them to put that structure there. Uh, the details are exactly what the station does, I totally leave up to you to describe, it's single's here.
Yeah.
But, you know, if they turn the role into them, they could explain that around here.
Thanks, Mike, you touched on, touched on mostly everything I had meant to mention here, uh, just, you know. The purpose of the station is to monitor ground level ozone, which, uh, in high concentrations affects, you know, that developing. Of lungs, uh, and could cause a lot of respiratory issues, including, uh. Exist aggravating asthma, fever. Thank you, yeah, and chronic arthritis, um. Yeah, and the purpose of this location, it's in an area that's relatively open from the coast for the. And for pollution from the larger, uh, urbanized areas to the south. Uh, do you guys have any questions, comments for me?
The proximity to the actual harbor itself and the boats going in and out is likely to create false readings.
There might be some influence from the diesel engines, but I mean, we've been in harbors before, and, uh. We'll see a little bit of the data, but it's not going to be so natural.
And so you're accustomed to doing this in these kinds of areas?
Yeah.
So this is going to be located in between the parking lot for Hobbs Harbor side and the gravel parking area where. Does that make setbacks to the property line?
Uh, there's no property line right there, there's a sanitary district easement, but there's no setback from that easement.
So what separates it because Hobbs is a town-owned parcel, it's just one parcel?
Correct.
Uh, I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Well, thank you very much. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the air quality monitoring station at Wells Harbor.
Second? All in favor? Or zero? Great, thank you, thank you, you take care.
Question, Mike, do we need the board to authorize, um, myself and/or you? To work with the town attorney just for, for her to construct an M O U or something back there?
Yes, I think one of, uh, the items my memo was recommending that is that the board would, yeah, grant you authority to work. With the town attorney, because the license agreement of the M O U will take some legal work.
I have my, my motion stated, yeah, I was, yeah, so if you might say, um, to authorize contingent upon my. And my working with the town attorney to, how we'd like, so, so, uh.
Do you want to read?
I'll, I'll sign it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Or zero?
Thank you.
Hey, while we're on the topic of sanitary district. Can we get on an agenda sometime, now off of, uh, Webhand and the pump station right there?
Yes, I talked to.
Can we, can we get it on an agenda sometime to maybe do something with that, because it's of no benefit to us, but it's of a huge benefit for them?
That's something, yeah.
There's a web hand right on the floor, I believe, there's lame, got there. I believe that's, that's. Uh, next, we have discussion and action on relocation of Arfa funding. Who's going to, really, this, she wrote a wonderful memo, she did it, everything. Much like Mike and Vizmals, great?
So, back in August of twenty twenty-two, we came before the board with interim town manager, Jeru. And we came before them with some projects on how we felt we might want to use our Arfa funding. Um, we had until December of twenty twenty-four to finalize our list. So coming before you today, um, from their approved projects back in twenty twenty-two. We've had some grants that we've received, and some changes have taken place, um, we've received BMO money, um, so some of the projects. Very, my public works director at the time was looking for guardrail money. Um, Mike and I are proposing that we take that and put it in a apartment budget, it hasn't been used since twenty twenty-two. Uh, we could do that funding somewhere else, same with that FEMA grant match from the Halloween storm. That project explodes, we don't need that grant match. Uh, we did complete. Well, we had some money earmarked for the Webhand and more Seawall. We did that because back when we were looking, we were trying to figure out how we were going to can raise island bridge. We have two bonds that went out, so we have some money now that. Were allocated to bonds for Drake's Island Bridge that we could now allocate for that Webhand at Seawall, so that frees up some of that money. The, um, Falls Hill Emergency Bridge repair did not vacuum it under budget, so there's a little bit of money left from that project. And then, so what we would like to do, the public safety additional parking lot really needs to be done. We don't have enough money to fund that project. Um, with the talks of, that we're talking about tonight. We need to look at what we're going to do at station two, if we're going to house people in that. Um, in money that we have set aside for sprinkler system, we don't have enough. And then, um, the rec water supply, the well is in, that project came under budget. So we'd like to just take the remaining money for, um, before tonight's forum. We're looking at allocating four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. To use to complete the public safety additional parking lot. They, um, look at what we need to do at station two, either do sprinkling or do housing up there. To cover the gas in the tennis court project that we have in place. And then, um, we also may be asking you to look at funding for, um, Eastern Trail.
Quick question. Just when we had that meeting about, um, webs just prior to this one. Why would we move four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to a parking lot? And why wouldn't we split that and put at least half of that with that hundred and thirty thousand? Towards station two, or we know that that is a critical need, I understand the parking lot would have to get done, but it seems to me it'd be more important. Being able to utilize that station given the context, what's going on with the background.
And, and with that alternative, I only to say, my understanding, uh, when I came here was that parking lot was a requirement upon. My understanding, uh, when I came here was that parking lot was a requirement upon the building of a public safety and I don't want to put words in your mouth. And we've extended that twice now. Can you elaborate on that first?
Yes, to meet the parking requirements of the ordinance, uh, part of the original cycling and approval for the whole safety complex. Was that off-site parking, and that was part of the approval and it was needed to meet the standards of the town for parking.
What's left to do now then?
Um, to build, to build a parking, but right now it's just a grass lot. And the approval was for a fence around the perimeter, security fence. Um, part of it was paved, part of it was grass pavers and a stormwater treatment area.
Does it have to be paved or could it be gravel?
Whole thing, uh, the part that is paved to be gravel.
So, just, I mean, I. Wouldn't a quarter million dollars be enough to put some fence up, some gravel and some grass pavers soon?
I would hope so. It's going out to bid very soon, so we'll know very soon.
I just think that we should really allocate some of that money over to station two. We know that's. One way or the other, we're gonna need that station, and it wasn't, when it was built, it didn't take staffing into consideration at all.
John, am I correct that four ninety six encompasses station two as well as, okay, maybe I misread that.
Yeah, we haven't asked, we haven't come out and said we want X number to go to which project. We're just asking you that once we.
I misread that, that's my mistake. Sorry.
Yes, yes, we, that's the money that we want to use to allocate to those four projects.
Thanks for clearing it up.
Yeah.
I looked at half a million for a parking lot. Wow, that must be paid in gold.
So, Mike, we had, uh, a discussion earlier this week about, uh. Potentially inducing Arfa funding toward the match for the Eastern Trail.
Julie and I spoke briefly on that. We may be able to have earmarked some money. We don't know how much, um, toward the Eastern Trail efforts. Um, so we're asking for the flexibility to be able to address some of these items and other things that may come up.
So of the seven ninety one. You want to allocate force four ninety six and change, correct?
To those efforts.
Yeah, so to the apples and that, there's still another two hundred and fifty or seventy thousand available.
That is correct.
Well, we have projects that are still underway, so you have a balance still for the Eastern Pier related improvements. I want to say back and the harbor master came before you. Like once last. Winter, the finisher project up there, so you allow him to use those funds. He just hasn't done that project. We're still paying the bills for Route One over Ragnum Brook, the construction that we're seeing now, so. Uh, that's still holding a balance, so. That extra money is already allocated to projects that are either in process or haven't been paid.
So you're using. This is kind of using a hundred percent of the seven ninety one, seven fifty, seven sixty four toward projects that are already in the process. Or not?
Well, so that's seven ninety one, seven fifty, seven sixty four shows you back in twenty twenty two what we approved. So you'll see there's approved funding and then any expenditures left me with the remaining balance. I'm asking you to take the eighty thousand from guard rails, sixty thousand from FEMA. I'm asking you to take the three hundred thirty three thousand, one oh three sixty three from web can at north. A forty thousand, forty, ten, fifty from Poles Hill Bridge. And allocate that, that funding, which totals the four ninety six, four forty one, fifty eight. And reallocate it to public safety additional parking lot. Station two. Um, the recreation tennis courts and then pending what we have left over, like I talked about using it for. Your match for the Eastern Trail.
How much? Ten dollars?
All this, all this is very fluid, so it's hard to give you a, a number. Uh, we'd love to be able to do something toward the Eastern Trail, uh, component. We just don't have an exact number yet on that.
But, yeah, we're coming into budget time anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm just reading this. So when, I guess I'm trying to figure out, when we built the public safety. Station two. One of the things was we didn't. We purposely didn't put housing in there. Are we putting housing in because of the ambulance, that what we might do? Or we put housing because of, because it was, it was directly stated when we built that, that that would not be us, that we wouldn't do that. I remember Carl Exson sat right there on that shirt saying, I do want, want to see housing, but that's not what we're building for, and, and. Maybe it was achieved before, I remember, oh no, we're not gonna do that.
I mean, I can speak subjectively. The reason why I think it's a necessity is just, is because of the situation with the ambulance. I don't think it's, I mean, obviously if it goes under the fire department, yeah, it's gonna be fire department, but. Even if their lease, say, they, they mentioned that their lease was coming up and they want fair market value. That's if something doesn't happen in the interim, that maybe your hospital decides that they don't want to lease that portion out. At that point, what would we do with that ambulance? We know there's not enough room in the primary station. That's just my viewpoint.
Right, so, but. You're, you're telling me in the last week. We decided this?
What?
Because the, the first time I heard about lens was this week. But, so in the last week we discussed.
No, we funded the Sistern prior, remember?
No, I hope the system, but it says sleeping quarters. It's right here, and now construct sleeping quarters. When was that?
That was, well, that was with the Sisterns. We talked about sprinkling it, then we ran into the issue where they came back and they said that that would be covered because of a water flow. And then there was.
I just think. Okay, I, I wanted to be stated that as well, I'm sorry, because I, I. We went to the people for this and said, we've heard we're gonna do that. And now all of a sudden say, yeah, we're good, because it's two years later. And I, I struggle with that.
Yeah, I understand.
They voted on something to build. If we want to go back to them and say. Do you want to build now housing? Is this what we have? I have no problem doing that. I've always supported the fire and building these things, but. We said one thing, now we're gonna go back and.
Well, we just need to explain why. We just like anything, we had to renegotiate, we don't play anybody.
It seemed like the money already. It said right next to sleeping quarters.
Yeah, and we've talked about this in the past. It was a long time ago now. We funded the Sistern and we. It was a two and four hundred fifty or four hundred ninety thousand dollar run there. Then it came out and I think it was, came out, there was gonna cost one, one point one, one point two million.
I remember, I, I mean, I. But I didn't.
We discussed.
Part of the part I'm missing.
Well, we discussed.
It was, it was intended to be, um, used as office space originally.
Right.
And then it was intended to be used as bedrooms later. We couldn't use that or do that until it was sprinkled. So the thought process was in the future, if we could move in that direction, we would. Unfortunately, no one anticipated the cost of the sprinkler system. And so therefore. It's a different animal.
Look, my, my problem isn't using it for sleeping. My problem is how we, we voted that in.
But it was originally voted to the voters. I, I understand as a much bigger, a much better complex than what was built. It came in at one point two million, it was supposed to be over two and a half million.
Right, we had to cut back.
Correct, and so there was a lot of changes that were made that it could not accommodate the way it was originally planned. So from what I understand, and I was not here, so I cannot comment directly on it. But the information that I received was that the voters did vote on something that they thought was going to be big enough and, um. Sustainable with personnel originally, and that didn't happen, so technically, if I'm correct. The voters didn't get what they asked for.
Well, this is very strong enough now.
Okay.
Because we sat right here, Carl Exson, I, you said, the one thing we're not getting is put sleeping in there.
Okay.
I mean, you know. I'm not saying, but.
All I'm saying is that's what I understood. I don't hope that's accurate.
Well, I will say that I, I was, I wasn't on the flight board at the time, but I was opposed to having sleeping quarters up there as voted at time. But my, my viewpoint since changed, I mean, I think, but I agree, I agree with you, what you're saying, Tim, I think what you're saying is just we need to make sure that the messaging is right. Make sure it's labeled right, because the optics will be bad otherwise.
Yeah, I think when you, you know, I mean, I, I get times change, I'm not saying that, but let's make sure we. We don't put the car people to work, we, we let the people know, we're taking this money to build, because it says right in this memo, house. You know, I mean, it doesn't say just the sprinkler, actually we put housing in there, and we haven't told the people that's where it was going, because when. When we, the whole reason, because I would have supported the big one. But we, we cut back, we, we cut back on purpose, you know what I mean? We, we, because after the people saying, hey, that's way too much money. And I was like, okay, that's what you're saying, the people are saying this is too much money, so let's cut that. At the original point, I, I supported the, the bigger complex. But, you know, I mean, so I just, that's, that's my point, is I don't want to go back and change something that, yeah, was vulnerable.
Could we just reallocate the functions C I P and then come back with a plan? To be voted on?
I think you dedicated those back, exactly as you're explaining, and then we come back with a proposal that is publicly. That's, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And Julie's, Julie's memo is absolutely correct from the standpoint of internally, we've been talking.
Yeah.
And even before whims, the question was, because I don't know, um, as we have more and more calls to the west. Would that be a place that we would look to staff ambulances and or fire department? And so we've looked at that for coverage of, of calls, but I think it's a very nice approach based on what Tim said. To just reallocate it and then we come back, so it's very transparent.
I support a station down in Tac. I, I, you know, I mean, I, I think we need to look at the big picture, but I just. My point is how we go about it. I just don't need somebody saying, hey, you did not, you told us, it never gets serious. You know what I mean? And then we're also now we're in the troubles of the people. I, I, that's not, it's got nothing to do. I'd love to build a station over Tac, I love, you know what I mean, but. Yeah, I.
No, it's quite well taken, if we, if we absolutely.
I'd look into the history and how we said that, because I. I just distinctly remember sitting here saying.
We were sold by another board at different means, we can't go back and, and change the way that was done, so. Let's work on fixing it going forward.
Yes, exactly.
So, see a motion. Any further discussion before we get a motion? All right, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reallocate the Arfa funding as designated in the memo and as amended by this board in discussion. Does that make enough sense? I think we know the direction.
Give a second. Four zero. Julie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have discussion and action on proposed changes to the Energy Advisory Committee website. John, you want to come up?
Uh, yeah, I think I could come up.
Everybody have a chance to read? Any questions, discussion?
So the, um, topic that we suggested to be added to the website, um. If you have that information, I'd be happy to, to say it, um, if you prefer.
What's that?
Uh, that, the. What we suggested add to our website.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, I, if, if you want to go through all of them, John, you can. Um, like, does anybody have any questions before John goes through? Looks good, John.
Okay, yeah.
If you want it, by all means.
Yeah, I don't need to get into the details if, um, the understanding of what the intentions and then what the subjects, uh, specifically are in terms of. The work that we intend to do.
It looks good to me.
All right. Great, thanks so much.
Great, thank you, John. We appreciate it. Do we, um. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed changes up to the Energy Advisor Committee website.
Second, all in favor? Four zero. Next, we have discussion and action on updates, personnel and committee assignments, resignations and issues. Uh, the first is appointment of Joshua Legasi as a regular member to the planning board. We have a motion.
I move to appoint Joshua Legasi as a regular member to the planning board.
Second, all in favor? Four zero. Next, we have the appointment of Tina Bachi as an associate member of the planning board.
I mean, to appoint Tina Bachi as an associate member to the planning board.
No, um. For a second. At, at the last meeting, we discussed this, it was said, well, this person had applied before. But who, that person wasn't, was that person accepted as an alternate member or not?
Yes, she applied at the same time as, um, David McKenzie. And at the time that she was interviewed, there wasn't enough. Um, there was a vacancy for her.
So the B S I R is an alternate then?
Correct.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that we, we follow the process.
Absolutely.
I just didn't remember yet. Thank you. Okay, so I'll second you.
All in favor? Four zero. Next, we have discussion and action to accept donations and requests. First is a two thousand five hundred and three dollars and eighty cent, uh, donation and online, uh, gift. Online funds, gift cards and cash donations received as of twelve eleven twenty four for the We Are Wells Fund.
I move to accept the generous donations.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Next, we have a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the David Tlemany Foundation to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the John and Julie Argini Giving Fund and Fidelity Charitable Donor Advice Fund to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a five hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a two hundred and five dollar donation from Scoop Deck to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a fifty dollar donation from Michael and Mary Madura to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a five hundred dollar donation from Dennis and Melody Hardy to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a five hundred dollar donation from Ronald and Beverly Essens to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. What's that? Didn't I say Donald and Beverlyism? I thought I said Donald. Uh, we have a five hundred dollar donation from Eric Baum to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a hundred dollar donation from Joseph and Nancy Geneseo to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a one hundred dollar anonymous donation to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a four hundred seventy nine dollar donation, uh, from Kong's Donuts, Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. This donation is from ten percent of their sales on eleven twenty two, twenty four. We have a fifty dollar donation from Shores Church to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a donation of two fifty dollar Aniver gift cards to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a donation of three one hundred dollar Amazon gift cards from the Eastern Propane Springvale Office to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a five hundred dollar donation from Wells Church of the Nazarene to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have a twenty five hundred dollar donation from Fidelity Charitable Donor Advice Fund and Forbes Family Foundation to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund. We have one hundred and twenty five dollar donation from Catherine Bain to the Town of Wells for, uh, Founder's Park Community Center. We have one hundred and twenty five dollar donation from Avery Suter to the Town of Wells for the Founder's Park Community Center. We have one hundred and twenty five dollar donation from Wayne and Naomi Smith and Diamond T Diversities to the Town of Wells for the Founder's Park Community Center. We have one thousand one hundred and twenty five dollar donation from Kathy Chase to the Town of Wells for Founder's Park Community Center. We have one hundred dollar donation from Steven Wood to the Town of Wells for the Conservation Land Program Fund in memory of Evelyn Bennerston. We have a three thousand one hundred and twenty five dollar donation from Friends Supporting Wells Public Library to the Wells Public Library. We have a twenty, we have twenty four dollars from various library users to the Wells Public Library. We have twelve dollars and fifty cents from various library users to the Wells Public Library. We have twenty dollars from Sarah Windle to the Town of Wells for the Fuel Systems Program Fund.
I move to accept generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero.
Incredible amount of generosity in this town.
Absolutely. Uh, next, we have discussion and action to approve the minutes, December third, twenty twenty four, select will be meeting. If, uh, meeting minutes. Well, we're welcome. I move for approval that December third, twenty twenty four, select will be meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Next up, we have new business open to the public for the second time this evening. Same deal applies. Anybody'd like to come up? Please come on up.
Hello.
Hello. Good, how are you?
There's a couple of things if I did, I'll just run through them. I was saying, when I spoke to Brian, um, before he left, that it'd be really good idea to have ordinance workshops. With the public, kind of like you did with the, with the, the select, but kind of like you did. Uh, when that large development was proposed, and a lot of the time was pretty heated up. And it just, I think that it would be a way to get the town a little bit more involved. I see a lot of things and I hear a lot of things about what people thinking. They aren't necessarily submitting them to Mike or to the planning board, but maybe they, they would show up at a, at a public event that they could, you know, raise some. Some topics with some things that are concerning to them. One of the reasons I, I want, try to get the public more involved, provide more opportunities for them is that plus or minus a thousand people voted in the last election. But they did not vote for. Um, any of the ordinances. So I mean, we had more than a thousand people, but about a thousand people for each ordinance. They didn't vote. They didn't know, vote yes or vote no. Part of it is, when you're looking at something so closely, you know what it says, and you know what you mean it to say, and everybody thinks that they know what it means. But when you're not involved in all the discussions. Some of those nuances are lost, and so they read it and it's like, I don't know, should it be, is this a good thing or bad thing? Is this something I'm looking for or not? So that's just an idea. Um, years ago, it's a separate, subtle subtopic, right? I was looking at a property, I'm finding one of those condos at Summer Village, and they've developed at the time. Probably told me that they. Now, whether this was truthful or not, I can't say, but they built it so that it could be winterized. Probably told me about that. Um, so I think that Tim was right that, that if um Seaglass was also done, has also done the same thing. It's like. We're edging ourselves forward. And I kind of thought we had a code that. We have a non-conforming development, you know, development, we can't make it more non-conforming. It sounded to me like we were going to make it more non-conforming. And so it just seemed to me that that's something that we should think about. The other thing is, is sometimes I hear that we should, well, we could make do this and make it conforming. And I, I don't think that we should necessarily go that way. Whatever property or ninety is not conforming, it'll always be non-conforming because we changed um. The width of the lot from fifty feet to whatever, a hundred, two hundred, whatever it is now. So it'll always be that way. And I understand that. That's just the way it is. That's what I have. Um, but you know, if we made my law conforming, look at, look at the changes that happens at the time. So making one little change creates a precedent for a big snowball of other changes that we may or may not be looking for. And it seems like it's out of sync with. A lot of the ordinance changes I was playing with. That's it. Everybody have a good holiday season.
Thank you. You too, sir. Thank you.
So can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because, well, I think we're in this. When we talked about that, folks, ordinances, we're in here and I said something, I don't know if I went over well or not, but I, I. It came up during the voting again, when people were asking me. It was way too many at one time for people to take the, I know this is gonna sound awful, like they didn't want to take the time to learn. All those. And I, I really think it was same thing I did when I was at the State House for the brief time. I kept saying way too many bills, way too many things going on, and nobody knows what the heck we're doing up here. It's the same here. I think there's way too many going up. We're trying our hardest to get these things through to help everybody, right? To, because we know that something happens, but we have too many.
Right, the time is also obvious. So you have to balance that.
But then people aren't gonna vote.
But something, something that I think would be, you know, good is like you see on, on some cattle things, it's like a yes vote means this. So then they know, okay, no, I don't want to vote yes, or yes, I do want to vote yes. So it's, it's, it's clear. And I know there's like legalese to how the ordinance is written. But it can be this, this like this one little summary that kind of gives people a hint right there as they're voting. A yes vote means X. And then it becomes, then it becomes like, oh, yep, yep, nope, 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 yep, you know, however they want to answer it. And it's not like you're steering them to, you just, you know, like. It's just be consistent. A yes vote and just stick with that. Or you could say a no vote. Whatever you want to do is just be very clear on what that means. What's the impact of that vote? Are we making um the boundaries, you know, uh more greenery or are we taking away? Because one of those was unclear. It was, I don't know, should I vote yes or no? I kind of like it being more green. Benefit the environment to be more green, but if I vote yes, am I just, am I making those, these setbacks smaller or bigger? I don't know.
Right. And I did, I said that point too, that remember that newspapers are written to a fifth grade level, right? In fifth grade reading level, every newspaper is written there. It used to be, there's not too many newspapers anymore, but when they were, it was a fifth grade level. When we write our ordinances, not their lawyers, it's, it's lawyers doing it. So I, I agree with you. If there was a way, I think some of those ordinances will have a tough time just giving you. I mean, one sentence, if you vote yes, this is gonna happen. You don't know this is gonna happen. I, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, I tried. I did it on, on Facebook.
Yeah.
It's not perfect. I try to let people know. It's not perfect. This is my interpretation. This is how I think. Please look up, look it up. This is what I think a yes vote means. But there were still two that I, even though I listened and I went back and I read, it's like, I don't know. I don't know the certainty. Do I want to vote yes or not? I just, I started with it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. We need to be better about educating people as to. What the proposals are that they're voting on, whether that be more educational, more online videos, whatever, but. It can get very confusing.
Well, let me run something by you while we're on that topic. I spoke to Mike the other day. How would the board feel? I was speaking actually to Sue the other day. Um, you know, like she said, when we're involved in it every day, we've been through every step of the process, we know. How would everybody feel about forming a working group uh for community outreach? And with all the topics we have going on, maybe get some input from some people that are maybe, you know, a little involved or whatever, but just with a different perspective to say. Town could do this or bring something forward like a voter's guide, a suggestion for a voter's guide. Or we noticed you advertise here, but I didn't see it, you know, be able to bring that in. I think that would be a good thing to do.
It's a good idea. Good fun.
Well, maybe we can add a topic on the next, one of the next agendas. I don't know. The next one's getting pretty full. I keep saying that.
They're all getting pretty full.
No problem. We'll squeeze it in there.
All right. Would anybody else like to speak at this time while we're on?
I just have a question on that. Are the ordinances already published somewhere? Are they on the website? Are they on? Oh, okay. So the people, I can say people later read them. Sometimes confusing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? All right. Well, we're gonna move on now then to town manager's board, right?
I will, I will move quickly. I would say good time and some other things you have. Um. Department head meeting today was excellent and I'll hit some of the highlights and then talk about the fire department. Currently at seventeen hundred and seventy six calls per service, which is about three percent higher than this time last year. Uh, they've been to nine building fires this year, four of which were at least a one alarm fire. They had a recognition, a holiday party and recognized many of their firefighters for um excellent work that they've done in various categories. I won't run through all that because I just want to acknowledge the good work that is happening there. Uh, tomorrow at four o'clock, there's a swearing in ceremony for four firefighters who were hired last year. They've completed their one year uh probationary term. Uh, Matt Pierce, Eric Valu, uh Justin Moon and Sean Torgin. Pretty close.
Yeah.
Uh, congratulations to them. I unfortunately will not be able to attend to a required commitment, but I will reach out to each of them to congratulate them. Police department very busy as well. Their arrests are up about four percent compared to this time last year. Uh, they had a number of officers who volunteered their time for the Christmas parade and I very much appreciate that. Um, lots of good things happening in that department. Carson Breck Santa uh visited last year. We had a great turnout of over a hundred kids. Uh, they sponsor parents now, you know. Uh, with parents having an opportunity to take some time for themselves and I understand that went very well. Um, Public Works, they're continuing because the weather's um receptive to roadside mowing and drainage ditch work. And so that all continues. So. Moving along there. Um, Allison Herman is serving as our interim library director and she reported today some really great things. The Celtic Christmas concert um was a great success with thirty four people in attendance. Portland Ballet was also a popular event with forty people in attendance. And the Story Trees by the Sea took place last Saturday and Sunday and they had over five hundred people attend that, which is pretty phenomenal. And Rebecca has reported out about all the great things for Please Across America and the events that took place this last weekend. So SASS been very, very busy by answering the bell all the time and I applaud their efforts.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to select board comments, subcommittee or boards or individual select board number comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
Just briefly, I'm. Uh, stopped in and talked with Mike earlier in the week with respect to um. Our part of the Eastern Trail and it's, the building is starting in December of twenty twenty five. So something that we have to think about or um. It's okay or whatever.
Excellent. Well, it's moved very long, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's the. One point two five miles on the western end. Uh, it's probably gonna be under construction by December, by now.
Well.
Hey, Jim. I thought. So in the years, we've given X amount of dollars, right? And they never, we never, but we did it so because they said eventually we're gonna get to your town and that'll benefit.
What that is, that goes to uh the ETMD and that's what we would, your uh liaison with the ETMD and I am as well. That goes towards maintenance of, of the overall um trail, including the road portions.
Hmm.
Uh, so if there's signage work that, that has to be taken care of or repaired. In, in wells, uh that goes towards that. And that's the six thousand dollar annual.
Right.
That's, that's.
That every town.
Yeah, all, all the towns.
But when it comes to building, I, I get, I guess I missed that. So when it comes to building in your town, then it's.
Then it's, it's, it's a huge.
No, I know it's a bigger evil, but all right. Thank you.
So and our, our portion is ten percent.
Do you have control lists as well?
Uh, uh, I think the, the total of the Wells portion is. About two point section of that. So I'm thinking. Two hundred and forty something thousand. I'll have, I'll, I'll be going to a meeting on the eighth, the eighth and I'll probably. More accurate than that. Going through the process and um. Working out each time. Which one's going to be?
Hey, Greg, what's happening? Just, just real quick, um. Sometimes maybe we could look at, you know, and actually you brought up a good point because you said we sold something to people. And, you know, we need to be careful of our messaging. And I was having a conversation with a towns person the other day. Um. With vestager. Let's say a substantial change is gonna take place on a subdivision. They can't lose their vesting if they come in. Like say, for example, you wanted to build twenty houses in a small adult force on a subdivision. You build your twenty houses and then went in and said, just kidding, I actually want to build twenty more houses over there. You can't lose that vestager, right? Is there a way of writing that in? That if you're gonna make a substantial change to a project, you're no longer vested and it kicks it back?
If someone came back for an amendment after they got approval, if, if they get approval for a project and it got built. Or even if they just got an approval and they were vested under an old ordinance, if they came back for an amendment. To add growing units to it, like another ten or twenty units, that would be under the new ordinance. They're only vested for what they had approved and ran bothered at the time they got the approval.
Well, let's say just with our process right now, though, is there any way, I guess what I'm asking, is there any way of capturing it? So if you have a project, there's a substantial change to it. That you can actually be, become unvested. And have to start over again.
Once you're vested, you're vested. Um.
Forever.
They can't add to it. Well, it, it, it still has to be reviewed by the ordinance at the time it was vested. So even in a project under an old ordinance, if someone comes back with a major revision. The planning board can revisit certain determinations that were made, say density bonuses. Uh, that'd be a good example. Someone came back and they were revising the layout and losing open space. Um, and the density bonus was given for a particular aspect of the open space. Um, if they redesigned that open space in a way that wasn't beneficial, they could lose the density bonus. That could happen even under, under adjusted application. If it's, if it's changed significantly.
Maybe sometime when we wade through some of these other topics, just because they're piling up, maybe sometime we could, we could add that as a topic of discussion that's talking about. So that's, that's it.
Because one, if they file an application, will become best corrected. It has to be.
And there's no statute of limitations on that? It's forever? As, as long as they continue with the application process and they meet all the requirements of the town, they're vested through approval. They get invested when they're deemed uh complete and preliminary submission. So they have to have enough data in, they get substantial review, which is at the preliminary review threshold. And so. And if they do that before those change.
And there's no requirement that they have to complete the project within a certain period of time?
There are deadlines that get established. And once you make it through your preliminary public hearing, there are deadlines that have to be there.
Okay, so, so if they don't meet those deadlines. And they don't do anything for five years and some of those deadlines expire, they have to come back afresh.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, if they got through the preliminary approval phase. And they didn't come back to within six months for the final, then the application is, is dead at that point, automatically denied. If they came back for preliminary approval and the planning board asked for additional studies. The planning board have to give extensions, reasonable extensions for them to do those studies upon new information requested. So it has, they have to continue to be active, yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be allowing you a workshop with code enforcement and planning department for the scheduled revisions. We don't have the big screen mic, so.
I don't need it for this one. So I did put together a memo that was in your packets. I wasn't here for the first workshop. I was down there very sunny and warm, so I missed that workshop. But I did watch the video and I had meetings with the code office afterwards and, and others as well. And I put together this memo that tried to summarize and come up with some solutions to the issues. I think the issues were. Our fee system for violations or certain stop work orders, only really identifying a thousand dollar fee in those situations. And not that the code office has applied that hefty a fee to all violations, uh what they could. And the thought was to create guidelines. Uh, so the public would know, you know, what a fee, appropriate fee was for a certain violation that's occurred, which typically the discussion was on work that occurred without a permit. Or if someone goes beyond the scope of a permit they got, instead of doing a ten by ten addition, they're doing a twenty by thirty addition, that type of situation. So in your packet, I did have a proposed fee schedule for the code enforcement office. Um, and the highlighted portions of that, of what's being proposed to change. Um, in that category would be working with bill permit, would be on the scope of the permit. And it would vary, the fee would vary for such a violation of double permit fees to the one thousand dollar fee. And we developed a speed schedule supplemental, which is the second page. Um, and it goes through a tiered system. So. A tier one violation would be double permit fees. Um, and that would be for projects that were minor projects that require a building permit. And the project, uh, these are certain thresholds for that fee. Uh, one would be a project less than a thousand dollars. Um, a demo permit, a lot of times is the one that the public doesn't understand they need. Uh, it's not a high dollar uh application. Um, window replacement, door replacements, railings, kitchen renovations. Uh, those are all seem to be a common theme where people don't understand they need a building permit, even though by the building code adopted by the state, they do. Um, so that would be a, a double permit fee situation. Um, sheds less than two hundred square foot. Um, and, and again, that's one that certainly is a project that costs more than a thousand dollars. You know, similar to a kitchen renovation, so those can be very expensive. Um, but those type of violations would not be. Um, they would be just double permit fees versus a larger fee. Uh, similar after the back permits. Uh, for say a property owner that is a subsequent property owner, you know, two or three people down the title chain, so to speak. And work was done on that house by a previous owner. Um, that they didn't know about, but was never permitted. So to correct that type of violation, that would also be double permit fee. So those would all be. Examples and categories, a tier one violation would be. Tier two would be a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars plus double permit fees. And that would be again, small projects, but cost that would be between a thousand and five thousand. Um, so it seemed like the, the most objective way to treat these type of violations was to base it on cost of the project. Um, other than the tier one, we have some categories there that seem to be common misconceptions when you need a permit or don't need a permit. Uh, but the other tiers are really based on the cost of the work. Uh, so tier three fee would be five hundred dollars plus double permit fees. And that we classify as a moderate project or a project cost between five thousand and ten thousand. Um, tier four would be a thousand dollar plus double permit fees. Uh, that would be for a larger project greater than a value of ten thousand. And of course, the question that comes in is, well, how do you determine the cost of the project? And at the bottom of that, um, with, with noted that the cost of the project would be based on. Um, several criteria. There's an IRS means data catalog, National Construction Estimator, in the Building Cost Manual. The National Building Cost Manual. Those are all references that are recognized nationwide. And are adjusted based on your location and inflation, depending on when that was published. Um, so as someone comes in, they have to identify the project, how much it costs. If that cost doesn't seem like it's reasonable to the market, the code office would go to one of these databases and. Calculate what the cost would be out of those databases. Uh, that's what the fee would be based on. So that was the approach. And thinking on adjusting those fees and categorizing them into a tier system. Um, a couple of other highlights you might see in the fee schedule or a couple of items that. Uh, were thought about after these fees were adopted last January. Um, but to make the, a town project or a school district project. Um, but to make the, a town project or a school district project exempt from building permit fees. Um, because that's really the town just paying itself. Um, and also notation, after speaking to the town attorney in one particular case on a subdivision fee situation. That if it's not specifically expressed in a fee schedule, uh, fees are not refundable. But one could add in writing in the table, so it gets adopted in that area. Something that was discussed at length at the last workshop too, is giving people a five day grace period to come in and file an application. And then the thought would be that it would be subject to a fee, um, or, or fine for that violation. But we, we sort of brainstormed that and how that would work. Um, and, and our thought process, process on this was more of the tier system instead. Uh, but logistically, it'd be very difficult, five days is, is a short period of time. So when the violation gets discovered, you'd have to make sure you post it correctly. And if someone's not home, how do you notify them of the beginning of the five day period? You know, if you do it by mail, a certified mail, that's five days away from when the violation was notified, so they're not gonna meet the five days then. Um, if the contractor is onsite versus the homeowner, the contractor might not tell the homeowner. Um, so you, you don't know if you're notifying the right person. You know, logistics of properly posting it, uh, was an issue. And, and then a couple of other issues were, you know, someone rushes in on day four. And what do they submit? Are they just signing the application and paying a check? You know, know that would be accurate, you need full details of the permit to be submitted. Um, similar situation if someone came, you know, was at the fourth day and there's a snowstorm, do you give a day or two grace period? If there was some other event in their life where they couldn't come in, how do you make exceptions for that? So there were a lot of logistic is, issues on trying to codify a five day grace period. Uh, so the consideration was to go to a tiered system and that would define the fees in a very exact manner. And so the public would know exactly the reason, you know, like the, uh, consequences of working the left permit. Um, so that was one half of my thought was on code, uh, fees. Uh, the other part of it, and it wasn't discussed at the last workshop, was, uh, planning fees. Uh, because the, we did pass an ordinance two oh two seventeen in November. That authorizes the board of selectmen to set a fee for subdivision violations. Uh, the planning board thought that was very important to do. To date, that someone commits a subdivision violation, the only real recourse the town has. Well, the county, town could decide to take someone to court and take legal action, uh, but the most effective is just to deny all building permits on the project. Um, but the, the, a fee would be another way to, to penalize someone violating a subdivision approval. And hopefully prevent that as a disincentive to, to have that happen. Um, so there was correct, there was an addition to the schedule for the planning department as well. Uh, that established a fee for subdivision violation. And similar to, to building permit violation created a tier system of what those fees would look like. Uh, so we had a, a tier one was a minor, tier two was a moderate, tier three was during construction. If someone didn't go through a proper, uh, process for an ending report, getting a minor modification. More significant violation, we've got so listed, as well as a major violation. A major violation would be a situation where, uh. You know, someone was at full default of their subdivision plan. And with the town had to step in to finish their project using performance guarantee monies to do so, um, so that would be a much more significant violation. Um, we were also proposing to split subdivision fees in half. Uh, not in half half, but to split them between preliminary submission and final submission. Currently, our fee schedule, all the fees are up, upfront for just when you spend your preliminary plane, pay all the fees. Um, and most towns split it half and half, so you get your preliminary approval and then when you come back for your final, you pay the, have the half of the fee. So it didn't increase the fee at all, it just split it in half. Um, when you spend your preliminary, you pay half and then a final you pay half. Um. So those were the changes. And we had the same, uh, footnotes as far as the town would, the school district would not be subject to those fees. And that all fees were non-refundable. Um. Another change that I think was discussed at that workshop was that all the fees collected from violations, stop work orders. Would no longer go to the enterprise fund, that that would go to the general fund or some other designated fund. Um, which the board of selectmen had the authority to do under chapter sixty seven. Uh, the current ordinance does say that all revenues generated, uh, have to go to the enterprise fund, so the board's likely would have to. Uh, conduct a public hearing, just like changing the fee schedule and modify that to be specific about that as well. I think that's all the topics I had in my memo, but as I said, I wasn't here for the original worksheet. I think this is a, a good start for discussion purposes. Um, I did give the same menu memo to the, uh, planning board last night. And they, they were gonna review and digest some of the, the subdivision violation numbers, uh. But they thought it was, again, a good start for discussions in workshop.
Would it be possible to split out? Base fees from fines? Because I don't have any issue with base fees going to the enterprise fund, but I don't wanna see fines go to the enterprise fund. Does that make sense?
Well, the fees that they collect for, like, if you're going to get a building permit, that one's still going, which the base fee would be part of that.
Exactly.
Yes, yeah, typical building permit comes in as a base fee and then depending on the size of the project is a square footage fee. And, and those going to the enterprise bond, and that's, that's how the enterprise bond was included by the voters and hardly approved budget. Um, it's just taking out the stop work order violation fees.
Violations would be codified.
Yeah.
It's still, they're all fees, right?
Yes, they're all fees, but.
Yeah, violation's a fine versus a fee for an application process, I, that, I just wanna. Make it very clear what's going into the enterprise fund and what is not. I don't wanna see us. It, it's a bad look and I don't think it's been anybody's intention, but, you know, kind of feathering our nest. In the code office by handing out fines and I don't, I'm not saying that anybody's doing that, but.
This is absolutely no benefit to do so.
Right, exactly.
It all goes to the town.
Yeah.
But, um, but to be consistent with what the voters voted on to ours establishing enterprise modern. You know, they'd wanna, uh, modify that chapter sixty seven to, to break that out. Um, and I agree, it's just, it's not a good look, so.
Tier one, uh, it says double permit fees. But we've changed that to double base fees, because the permit fees could be a sliding scale, right, where your base fees will all pretty much lock right in.
Yeah, the double permit fees would be, yeah, the base fee and square footage and then the back else.
About just base fees? What do you guys think of that? Because, I mean, this is, this goes back to that, the one that I get hung up on is that after the fact for projects completed by previous owners. Think a double base fee would be. More appropriate myself.
And usually those are small projects, so it might not even trigger a square footage fee. Um, so it's, it's not gonna be a lot of difference in money, but that could be double these fees, uh, the code office has to be.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm dealing with right now, all right? After the fact, all right, as the, uh, the owner's trying to sell the property. No permits on it, all right, and I found this out to the potential buyer, you know, and they're real. So they right now are in the process of doing a permit with me. Uh, with five different affidavits they have to sign. And if I don't get the affidavits, they have to tear it up, because what they did was the kitchen went from the upstairs to the downstairs, remodeled a whole tighter building. And we just did double permit fees and double square footage. No thousand dollars or anything else. But that one available, those are the type of situations where they're able to go.
But did they, but did they do it or did the previous owner do it?
They did it, but that's no different, he was sold to the next guy.
Well, that's, but that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm hung up on. If there's a way, double permit fees for everything else, I'd be all right with.
But you have to also understand, it's not just for someone doing that, it's also going beyond scope of a permit. So if you have a interior renovation for just a bathroom, when I show up and you've got to do all those.
Yeah, no, like, like I said, the only one that I have a concern with here where I'd like to see double base fees. Would be this after the fact permit for projects completed by the previous owners, not by the current owners, so if you inherited the problem.
There's a lot of inheritors.
Yeah, I know.
We have a lot of people not getting permits.
And it's gonna cost them a lot of money to, to fix it feasibly, correctly, anyway. I just, like I said, that one I'm hung up on.
Some cases, the very minor company, we're talking a permit that's probably under a thousand dollars, which is very minor square footage anyways.
Yeah, for the tier one, I think that what you just described, someone remodeling a whole house, that would go right to a tier four.
Right.
That would be the full thousand dollars in the whole permit case.
Which we're not doing a thousand dollars on those anyways, we haven't since I've been here.
For the after the back.
Yep, for previous owners, always double permit, double square footage for anybody who's done work without a permit.
I still think that if you inherit the problem, I think it should be as minimal as possible.
So why?
Yeah, I mean, if you inherit the problem, yeah.
Right.
Unless there's a way to go back and find the old guy, I have a hard time finding a new guy. Especially, it's been done without their knowledge, they just bought a problem and they have no idea.
Double base fee on that or do away with it completely? I hate to refine it at all, to be honest with you. I mean, I'd support just doing away with that completely if they can prove that they bought it in that state.
Yeah, I mean. I agree with that.
Jim?
Yeah, we, we, you know, it makes sense, so. They just have to look, look at property, look good, you know, they bought it. Have no idea that somebody didn't get a permit to do something.
Then, so they still have to pay a building permit fee though, right?
Yeah, it, it, well, if.
It still hasn't, they still have to file a permit, unless they get reviewed by staff, has to get inspected.
Let's, let's say that the, the improvement meets code. And so there's no requirement to do anything else.
But if, but they have to submit a permit, it gets processed administrative wise, it needs inspections to be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you could get around not having a building permit on something, but I'm just saying, as far as the fines are concerned, I don't think there should be any type of.
So you would have, have them file a building permit, that's something, or something that was done ten years ago. Um, and how would you estimate the cost ten years ago cost?
I have a close to know all of that, I do have a.
Okay, okay, I mean, that's fair.
That's fair. I mean, you'd have to get a permit on it, right? You couldn't just leave, they, they couldn't go in and see unpermitted work and leave it whether the person inherited it or not. I think just the, the, to me, it's just the, the idea of getting a, a fine. After something like that, I mean, feasibly, if they didn't get, if they didn't get that and you're gonna have to go through. Frankly, I'd think about suing somebody anyway, getting some money back for cost repairs and getting the permit, so they could always take a lead, get away with a civil.
So on that, I would want to not create a separate tier for that situation, but as a footnote. Exempt after the fact permitting from a fee.
Fine, fine, fee, I know fines, fees, I know we have that.
Uh, but subject to regular permit fee.
Yes.
And I would do that as a sort of a footnote, footnote down below.
Our former conversation. Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought Jody, or it was intended that Jody was able to adjust things down for folks. You know, depending on the situation, is the policy that all fees are non-refundable going to impact your ability to do so? Are you talking about our violation? Yes.
So for violations, if we go to the tier system, they would be found. Wait, so what she's been doing ever since she started almost twenty years ago, she's taken every case, case by case. Brought the people in, talked to them on the phone or whatever, and adjusted, just like I, I reviewed the last time with you, she had the numbers that I reviewed for her. Uh, that fifty one percent of all residential violations this year, she reduced from a thousand down to either zero to two fifty or five hundred. So she's done that. You know, Jody, she's very fair, uh, straight, level headed, and she goes through everything, gets down the violation. And again, like I said the last time, every violation is different, it's depending on what scope of work is, how it goes up. So, you know, when we start getting to life safety things, that's, that's the game, you know, because I have to worry about these guys going to a fire.
Well, that's the thing with the tier, nice thing about the tiered system is, it just removes that onus from somebody. Physically thinking that they were treated differently, you know, to me, that it's not gonna put the onus on them to make that call. I understand you guys do a good job of this, I'm saying it's just public perception. Somebody can just go, when you, I mean, you know how it is, I wasn't treated fair, you know, the other guy down the street, that, that didn't happen, and at least with the tiered system, it's right here, is what it is.
Your non-refundable point though is a good point, but the footnote I have right now is just all fees non-refundable. And typically what the code office does, correct me if I'm wrong Jim, but if someone submits a building permit. And for some reason they decide not to do the project. Um, the code office and Jody will, will refund the square, they keep the base fee, because time was involved for staff to review the hundred initiative. Administrative wise and, and everything else, but they always refund the square footage portion. And we, I, I would want to write an exception in there so they can continue that practice.
That's right on the application, plus refundable was not.
How do we feel about that? I, I just don't wanna tie her hands if she feels strongly that something needs to be reduced.
Well, I mean, I think we're talking two different things, Mike's talking about the original permits, that if somebody comes in and cancels something, there's a refund for that.
Yeah, no, no, no fee related.
Scott's gonna find, Scott's contemplating, like, let's say it's a tier one project under a thousand, it's a double per, double, double permit fee. But for some reason there was. Uh, the viewpoint that it wasn't necessary, some type of extenuating circumstance that we can't proceed at this point.
So I'm a little confused, because last time we met, you didn't want Jody to have that ability to make those decisions, you wanted to take it away from her, that's why we went to. Originally possibly a five day, and now we're looking at a tier system, which the tier system should be where it is.
Yeah, I, I thought the objective was to take subjectivity out of it.
Well, that was mine, I can't speak for Scott.
Well, I, I, the, the, the would all agree with that, the last meeting. So I mean, again, it's been working fine, with the exception of maybe a few font files we've had, uh. And we're changing it, so, I mean, this is where we're at, so.
It's a workshop, I'm bringing it up as.
Discussion. And we, we've met already on this, about the tier system. I'm just, again, I've always gone on the assumption of my left, but it doesn't, it was not broke, don't fix it, but. Just me.
Why are you thinking about that? What do you think of the subdivision?
Like those.
Yes.
Good. If you digest it, we can talk about it more at the, the next, at the next workshop.
It's in the regular fee schedule. Somebody, uh, wants to replace a window. Where, where does that fall under standard permits?
That would be, oh, and currently, yeah, um, and would need a building permit. If someone did it without getting a building permit, be double permit fees.
No, no, I'm, I'm not talking about fines, I'm just.
Regular base fee, that's it. No square footage.
Okay, so.
Same with the door.
So what is that? Is that a hundred and forty bucks?
A resident for the S two fifty commercial.
And how do you, so if there's no additional square footage, in other words. The footprint and the fabric is the same before and after, it's just the base fee?
Well, depends on what you don't work, I mean, the footprint not changed, but if you're doing work in space, if you're doing a whole battery model and it's eighty square feet, it's eighty square feet. That's what the permit's for, plus basic.
The interior square.
The interior square footage. Because any remodel affects taxes. And that's how they get their updates throughout permits.
Yeah, but a window where yours just doesn't have footprint really, you're.
Okay.
It doesn't work really really small.
So you, you mentioned, uh, deck repairs are earlier as being a problem from somebody.
I think at the last workshop, yeah, deck repair, the items that, like, replacing decking, if it's rotted, that doesn't even need a permit.
Doesn't need a permit.
But if you touch the railings, it's theirs, that does.
Right, the life saving.
And, and that's just basically because there's no square footage.
Sure. Now, if you take the whole deck apart or have to take the undercarriage apart, then now you talk square footage again, because now you rebuild the deck and you rebuild the structure.
If you get into the choice and all that, yes. But that would fall under, if someone did it without a permit, it would be on the tier one level.
Correct.
Just curious.
Well, I mean, everything looks good to me other than that. Well, I mean, everything looks good to me other than that one thing that I, that one note that's on there, that one that was there for. Uh, but. Inheriting somebody else's problems, it stays.
Uh, the planning board did have a comment at last night's meeting. Um, currently we have. Um, after a project is approved, we have a, a fee for hourly rate. Of what the, uh, staff, if they're positioning myself to charge, um, afterwards. If our time is involved with a default, where we're completing a fault, if we're developing, if we've gone and pulled the fault. The planning board wanted to see that hourly rate to be able to, to increase the more what market rate is versus just the cost of the town. Um, but I did ask the town attorney that question and she said, there's case law that wouldn't allow you to do that. But you can assess the fee and, and that was part of the thinking on the, on the highest level. The fault fee of five thousand dollars, that instead of somehow increasing that hourly rate for us to resolve those issues. That we get compensated in that larger fee. Um, but the question was, you know, still could. Could the fee be doubling the hourly rate? I think I know the attorney, town attorney would probably say no, because it's still an hourly rate and you're. Making hourly rate that's greater than what the cost of the town is, but. Um, so the better option may be just a large fee, one time fee for a faulty.
Yeah, but these things right here are pretty egregious, I think. I mean, in terms of planning.
It's only happened twice since I've been here, where we've had to step in and finish some item for a project. Um, or a subdivision, there's been a few on site plan level, but. But, uh, yeah, only one significant one in the, in those fourteen years I've been here.
I mean, I assume that there'd be plenty of due notice before they got to that point.
Oh, yes, yeah, plenty of default notices and warnings and, and, uh, notification of that. And, you know, that default notice would come from the planning department, uh, but they had the option to go to the planning board to. Not necessarily appeal it, but to ask for confirmation through the planning board on whether it's a fault, is it correct the fault?
Whenever, whenever I hired an engineering company, they, they come out for. Half a day or a day, I swear I'm getting charged over two grand. So to me, that seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, the, um, yeah, the comment that was made was that, you know, the, the, um, cost to the town at the one time. Is like seventy dollars an hour, but a regular engineer consulting fee is almost double that. Um, so the developer, the planning board didn't want to see the developers having an incentive to come onto the fault and then have me finish a project for them, so.
Could just give them a raise? How does it really feel about all this good?
Yeah, yeah, with, with the modifications that he's proposed, you know.
I can work on those few changes and maybe, I think Mike and I were talking about a workshop in the second meeting in January.
I think so, yeah, probably the twenty first. Jody will be back then to.
And then we could look at scheduling a public hearing, the first meeting in February and the possibility enacted at that point.
Alright, sounds good. That'll be planned. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Jim. Alright. Uh, next we have an executive session, uh, yeah, to, to conduct an executive session, pursue it to one MRS. Four oh five six A to discuss a personnel matter with town manager.
And move to enter into executive section, pursue to eleven MRS, four oh five six A to discuss a personnel matter with town manager.